Good morning. I called the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, and the first order of business is to decide who is going to actually lead the meeting since the chair is not available.
I will make the motion that Lawrence Olson preside over today, December 17th, and December 23rd's meetings in the absence of Linda Merkin.
I will second that, given there's only two of us up here. Okay, thank you. All right. Hens, aye. Olson, aye. So anyway, thanks for that. Okay. Now, if everyone would like to, who would like to, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, as I call it up here, should be approval of the agenda. I'll second. Hens, aye. Olson, aye. Okay. And now it's time for public comment number one. This is for anyone who would like to come up and comment either on something on today's agenda or something else that is on your mind. Anyone care to approach the microphone right over here? No? Okay. And I see we've got some more students. Where are you from?
Ames.
Hello, welcome. Our third group of Ames High School students who've come in to watch us will try to live up to your expectations. Okay? Okay. So next up, we have agency reports. Keith Morgan, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a bit of an update on what's happening with emergency management. Good thing is that response requirements were a little less during the quarter. The common thread amongst our responses was that they were to support search and rescue efforts both here within the county and outside of the county. The first two searches were in support of Ames Police Department searching for a missing autistic child. During that search, the EMA requested the Polk County Sheriff's Office deploy their drone because it had infrared capabilities. It was a nighttime search. The drones can provide many different emergency, support many different emergency management missions such as search and rescue, but also damage assessment, as we've done down in Kelly with the flooding, and building situational awareness of any event. I understand Sheriff's Office has been exploring the possibility of acquiring a drone, and our office would see value in some agency within Story County having this capability. Another common thread to these searches was our STAR One Search and Rescue Team. They're a completely volunteer team that our department does support slightly with financial support, and their services can be used by any jurisdiction within Story County, and also they offer their resources to other jurisdictions, and as a matter of fact, have deployed outside of Story County many different times. So that's a quick recap of our responses. Do you have any questions on that?
I don't have any questions. I just appreciate the work that your office has done to be able to go out and assist in these, you know, situations. And it just, to me, it just sounds like, I would like to know a little bit more, maybe not at this particular time, but from you or maybe from the sheriff, on the infrared drone of having something potentially up in this particular area on it.
Yeah, it's, and it goes beyond just the infrared. There's a lot, there's a lot of a support package that goes along with a drone. There is, you can get the little handheld ones, which is what we did down in Kelly to get preliminary flood assessment down there, but to get ones with a greater battery capability, more lifting capability, and when you start talking about nighttime capability, then it gets to be a lot more expensive. But on the flip side of it, you can see that there is a broad number of ways that it can be useful, so.
Does the Ames Police Department have anything like that, or?
No, they don't. That's why we were.
That's why you're exploring it.
Reaching out to them.
So it's not on the agenda, but if the sheriff wanted to give us a for information only or not, I know we discussed it a couple of years ago when I first came on the board, a little bit about cost.
Just from here, or?
You're gonna have to come to the mic. Sorry. But so, and one thing, I'll ask both of you, as long as we're having a quick conversation about it, is I remember that when drones, the law first came into being, that someone had to be a licensed pilot to fly a drone. So if you'd like to just give us an info-only quick update.
Okay, you're correct. The drones are expensive, and if you look at the sheriff's budget proposal, as we get ready for our work session, we have included the drone this year. The drone that we've been studying and building for the last couple, three years to what we felt would fit our needs for not only the Sheriff's Office, but throughout the county, is just over $25,000. It also has in our budget to put out schooling for, to create one pilot, but we all know that whenever something happens, that person's always on vacation. So we happen to have a person in our office who's actually on our drone committee, who is just completing his test to become a drone pilot. And he will have the information and things that he can share with the others, whoever else we would select to be a drone pilot. Those people will then be able to go into the FAA and take their drone pilot test, and then we can increase the number of pilots we have there, which will offset a little bit of the cost. To my understanding, right now, there's no one that has drones in Story County. I don't know about the Ames Fire Department or anything like that, but issue arose last year that really put us on the fast track for a drone. We had an individual break into a residence north of Kolo. The homeowner came home. They got into a fight. He escaped into the cornfield, the subject did. We surrounded the cornfield, and Marshall County, its mother, brought some of their commercial, smaller drones over. We contacted the state police for their airplane with the FLIR, and they said their plane isn't flying, and with their financial conditions, I don't think it's flying anywhere nowadays. And we contacted the military, the National Guard, and they said for get their pilot with the helicopter and the FLIR up, there has to be a drug nexus. The guy we were after is a known drug dealer in Story County. We did that, and they said, well, we sympathize with you, but go to the state and have them set up their FLIR. So we're really without the FLIR capabilities in Story County. So we put that in our budget this year. We have talked to the Board of Supervisors for the last number of years on that, but because of the cost, it's been struck. But with things that we've seen that we've needed, not only within the Sheriff's Office, but as Keith mentioned, the floodings and other dangers, one of the other nice things, capability that a drone will have, you can also get a tethered drone, which you can send up, and it can run continuously in one spot and act as a observation point for your command. So when you're recovering from a tornado or floods, you can sit there in the command post and see what's actually going on in real time.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Yeah, thank you for coming up. It'll be discussed again at Budget Workshop time, and I know Supervisor Merkin will be listening and watching these. Okay. So Keith, thank you, and we'll get back to your report now that we veered there a little bit. So, search and rescue, are you, it seems like, yeah, this has been what's on your agenda, this particular, what you did this particular quarter. Do you anticipate that there'll be probably more call-in for you from even nearby counties for these types of operations?
I would say definitely for our search and rescue team. Oftentimes, when we get the initial call, it's, we need a dog, a search dog, which we do have within that organization. But what we have found, especially with one of my counterparts, was assisting with a missing autistic child up in Black Hawk County. The management of that overall situation rapidly grows. One day, she had over 800 volunteers. And just how you put together and how you track what you're doing in a search is some of the expertise that our STAR One people bring to the table that others don't have. They have specialized mapping capabilities and just in-depth knowledge on where people with dementia, with autism, those kind of issues, where they'll tend to go to. And also, they think of little things like, are there any private security cameras, your household cameras, that might have video of this individual going by? Because, for instance, on the Ames search, we had no idea. North, south, east, west, we didn't know. And by doing this, we can narrow down our search and most effectively utilize our resources. It has been surprising how much, you'd think in Iowa flat land like we are, we wouldn't have much. But again, with tall corn and other issues along the way, we have had actually quite a bit more calls for our search and rescue team.
Okay. Well, thank you to both you and Melissa Spencer and your volunteers who've come out with the STAR Team. That rarely happens during the day during normal working hours.
And you're very correct on that also, that whatever agency's doing it, we'll try and utilize their resources to the best that they possibly can. But when the sun starts going down is usually when they start reaching out for help. So you're correct, we will oftentimes be deploying just as the sun is setting on some of this stuff. But especially in winter time, times of an urgency on this. And we'd rather be out there, we always tell them, call us early. And for instance, they were, actually, the STAR One Team was gonna go down to southeast Iowa and got down there just when they found the individual. But we always tell them, call us early, because we'd rather get rolling towards the scene and starting to put together a plan than waiting until it's dark, which makes the search much more difficult.
Sure.
That's our response capabilities. As you know, response is actually a small part of what we do. If we do good planning, training, and exercising beforehand, the response goes much, much better. And on the planning side of it, we've made the full circuit from the I-35 seven-car pilot back in February to a revised I-35 plan that we have circulated amongst all the agencies, and we actually tested it in October to make sure that some of the revisions to the phone numbers and to the concepts were integrated, and that went fairly well. Another major part of our efforts has been on the training front. This quarter, we did an awful lot of training. And as I've said, the best tool for emergency management is well-trained people that can adapt to whatever situation that we have. So that's why our investment this quarter in training, I feel, has been well worth it. As I highlighted in my report, we had seven different training events that we put on in this quarter alone and provided over 1,000 hours of student hours of training. And some of this training was very well tailored. For instance, here in Nevada, we had training for the city administration, which you attended, on the 103. We were able to bring it to a local and also to their level on, within a jurisdiction, which is important, to make sure that people get the right kind of training. Some of the other subjects that we covered is the incident command structure. We hosted both an ICS 300 and 400, which is that mid-level management training for larger events. And we had individuals from all the agencies across both this county and some from exterior counties join us in that training. You were down there and saw our EOC training, three different sessions that we had for the EOC training, about hour and a half, two hours, which was hooked up to the state, which is what we have to do. We can train internally all we want to, but we're not there for ourselves. We're there to be interfacing with other operations, so that's why that was important. We've had two sessions really for business resiliency. One of them, I was assisted by Nevada PD, where we talked about hostile intruders and about severe weather. And also, the cyber training that we just completed was also opened up to our businesses. And the cyber training was hosted, provided by the Department of Homeland Security. Two areas that I see for improvement, though, is our EOC training and our cyber training. We only had 50% participation on the EOC training, and we don't, we're not gonna have time during a large-scale disaster to school up. And it's really essential that we get the staff down there and that we get them trained, not just here, but the, and we need to get more staff from outside of this agency integrated into our EOC. The second one was the cyber training. We had 120 seats for an issue that is hitting both businesses, government, and all our agencies, and we only filled 25 of them when it came to the cyber training, which I find interesting. Again, considering ransomware is in the news, you know, every couple of weeks or so. But we will continue to work on that, and we'll continue to try and get the word out there when we do have training and show people why it's important for them to be there for that training. That's it for training side. Have you got any questions on that? On the exercise front, Supervisor Merkin and I went down to a state-level exercise on African swine fever. What was very, very important on that is that during that exercise, we saw how the state and the federal level was bantering back and forth how they were going to take care of the situation. And not once did we hear them really consider what would be the impact at the local level on this. So we kind of shoved our way forward and got them to start thinking about those kind of issues. We also brought them back here, had a meeting with Board of Health and Environmental Health on how we would approach that event, should it occur here or impact us here. Again, this is one of those events that comes in laterally. It's not a, something that we have much control over here locally. And again, there is not enough appreciation, I think, at the state and federal level on how their plans will have collateral impacts on us here. For instance, you know, they'll just put a quarantine around the farm, and that'll be said and done. Well, the media attention to something like that will drive security issues, will drive transportation issues along the way. So we're gonna try and get ahead of the game, both on the messaging side and also trying to line up in our minds what some of the resources might be needed to deal with something like that. The other thing we did is we tested our mass notification system. And an interesting point on that is, if we were to use that mass notification system, it would have actually taken us about an hour and 20-some minutes to be able to get all the phone number, phone messages out. That's because the system calls three times to try and get hold of somebody. Seems like a long time, but in reality, the time that we would ever have to send out a mass notification to the entire county would be very, very limited. The system is designed to be very geographically targeted on the messages, which would speed up the value of it. We also learned some of the ways on how you construct the messages and like that to make them more efficient. So well worth it, and we will probably integrate that into an annual training, just because the public information that we did beforehand helped us get a lot more people signed up for the program. Moving along to operations, we are hopeful that the grant we are working with your facilities folks to get us a generator will make it through the system. We have had no pushback yet on it. We will continue to monitor it and work with your facility folks to hopefully get us that increased capabilities. It is essential because as we go through the different operations, we will need the support of the rest of the building should we have a large-scale event here in the county. Another way that we're working with the facilities folks is that we will be buying a wireless upgrade, a wireless repeater upgrade for our EOC. This gives us an opportunity in the next fiscal year to look at possibly collaborating with your facilities folks to take that basic wireless repeater and drive down the cost of Story County having to maybe expand its wireless capabilities throughout the building. And lastly, we are looking to finalize the lease agreement to allow us to repurpose the Ames Secondary Roads facility for us to be able to store our command and control trailer and also our mask care trailer, which are essential equipment and which will, the costs invested in that will help us preserve those assets much longer term as opposed to them sitting out in the weather. And also, the command trailer needs to be hooked up to electricity.
On that last note, there, the Board is looking at, in the capital improvements plan, approving a county-wide study about facility storage needs. And so, that, I would anticipate will include your needs. We, I think I've asked at the board table before, where is it better to store it? And obviously, ideally, would be in the center of the county rather than having it at one place. So any upgrades you do or whatever, maybe would keep that in mind as far as.
Yes, ma'am. That's gonna be one of my long-term capital issues also, is that there is limited life left in that shed. And we do wanna make sure that we don't bump ourselves up against a situation where we rapidly have to find an alternative. I would like to be able to really study it and find us the most cost-effective way of taking care of this stuff.
That's great.
Looking forward, as you can see, we've been really busy over the last quarter, and we haven't really gotten to focus on our planning as much as we'd like to. We are continuing our initiative to work with Ames to make it so that all of our plans mesh together well. And also, we've had Sheldon approach us, tiny community of 319, but they have a unique situation being in three different counties. And we had a two-hour session with them, walking through how we might make their plans, bridge the gap across all the different counties as we're going. We're also working with the Ames Airport to enhance their ability to react to any sort of situation which might be out there. The integration of the new radio system into our operations is going to be a major factor. We have identified exactly what we are going to be purchasing. It does include the capability to be able to do on-scene bridging of radios, even though if there is a capability that is inherent in the overall system, we're all about redundancy and added capabilities, and for a minor cost, we're gonna be able to do that. But also, we'll be putting radios into the command trailer, into our vehicles, and all along the way to make sure that we can facilitate, both have communication connectivity and facilitate greater connectivity across the agencies, both in the county and external to the county that are around us. And we will continue our efforts to be prepared should African swine fever reach the shores of the United States and even worse, somewhere in the state or county. So with that, I open it up to any questions that you might have.
I don't really have a lot of questions. I'm just looking at all that you've been doing this particular quarter, and particularly all the trainings that you've done. I found the training that I went through really quite interesting, and assume that future-wise will continue to be invited to various, various trainings. But I do appreciate kind of the breadth of training that you do, your outreach to all the personnel throughout the county who can partake in those trainings to be prepared.
It's my master plan to be really lazy, because the better everybody else is to do their job, the more I can kick back and take it easy.
Sure, sure.
Is the local emergency planning committee, are they getting ready for another meeting? Are you looking at one after the beginning of the year, or?
We sent out the invitation to bring them to the cyber training as a part of it. We will probably have one regularly scheduled. It'll be about mid, you know, January, because if we have it in November, I think it's in the early February timeframe on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, you know that you're purchasing a second vehicle?
Yes.
So that will be a truck also, or is that that today on my?
No, it'll be a truck. We have found that the versatility of a truck, both to tow our trailer, if somebody needs a pallet full of sandbags, we can throw it in the back of our truck. So we are going to maintain that versatility and also make it so that we can stagger our vehicle purchases so that when one goes away, we don't, or if we have a problem with one, we're not dead in the water.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks for the opportunity to address it.
All right. Consideration of minutes.
So moved.
I will second. Hens?
Aye.
Olson, aye. We'll move on to consideration of personnel actions.
So moved.
I will second also. Hens?
Aye.
Olson, aye. Moving on to consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda as presented.
I second. Discussion. Hens?
Aye.
Olson, aye. All right. We have next, public hearing for the consideration to advertise for a bid for the Story County Justice Center HVAC heating.
Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning.
Thank you. Equipment replacement project. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. I've got Brian Brewer from Brewer Engineering with me, who is kinda here. If questions get too technical, I rely on this guy. I will just kinda start out with the meat and potatoes of it, and then if we got questions, we can hit them at the end. It's basically the first phase of an anticipated three-phase HVAC equipment replacement project at the Justice Center. This Phase One is budgeted in this fiscal year, but as you can see by the cost estimate we got, we're looking at about $112,000 over what we anticipated the budget being. Comes down to it, there's 12 total units that we're looking at replacing and then relocating the one unit that was replaced in early spring of 2018. With this scale project, we also gotta, we gotta meet all current code requirements. And we found that we had three units that significantly did not meet air exchange code in areas. It's basically, there's block of cells that have toilets in the cells, so that drives a higher level of exchange rate. You gotta get certain level of the, you know, contaminated air out of the space and replace it with outdoor air. So those units didn't meet the newest code requirements, and so that drove the unit to be physically bigger, which then equated to it weighing more than what it was replacing. So we ended up having to look at supporting the roof structure to accommodate the extra weight of these three units. We looked at, we could've met the air exchange rate and just put a unit in, but didn't take energy efficiency into the equation. But then, it was determined that that would, right off the top, probably increase our overall utility cost by about 25 to 30%, which in less than three years, we'd have spent more in utility costs than it would be to purchase equipment that has energy efficiency and energy recovery built into it. So, plus, putting that level of untreated outdoor air into a unit would've decreased the life expectancy of those three pieces of equipment by 12 to 15 years.
Did they ever mat, did they ever meet standards?
I went back and looked at some codes, and that was back in '91. It was difficult. It came close. The way they approached it, I think some of the equipment was new, and some of it was maybe related to the energy efficiency, things they were trying to do with the shared. I know the utility company was paying for a lot of the.
Yeah. Originally, when this project went underway, Alliant Energy was, played a big role in it. So they, Alliant Energy purchased a lot of the equipment to help. It played in with the generators that are there. There was a load shed agreement that if, in high demand times, primarily in the summer, and when it gets real hot, heavy air conditioning load, then Alliant was anticipating on pulling the Justice Center facility off of the grid and having us run on the generators to kind of take some of the load off of the power grid. That has never happened in the time that I've, I've been around, since the building was built in 2002. We were never load-shitted. So part of that agreement, Alliant purchased the equipment, and then Story County just paid a higher utility rate for set a number of years to help pay off that equipment. And then about five years ago, Story County chose to buy out of that agreement. Alliant Energy approached Story County, and that was approved about five years ago. So, like Brian was saying, we think that that might have dictated why some of those pieces of equipment were sized the way they were. And it's kind of one of those, it's not like any kind of code. There's some of its interpretation. So when you read through it, it's like, if you look at it this way, yeah, kind of technically they met. If you read it this way, yeah, kind of technically they didn't meet the requirement then, but they will for sure meet the requirement now, so.
Thank you. And the roof will be able to bear the load.
Yes. And then, so there was some, so a lot of the cost increases can be. And then, so there was some, so a lot of the cost increases can be, you know, pinpointed to those three units, just the equipment themselves, to get the energy recovery, which basically that uses the conditioned interior space to help heat or cool the outdoor air that you bring into it so that that unit itself doesn't see that huge temperature difference. You know, like, let's say it's 20 below zero out, and you're roughly bringing in 40% outdoor air. That unit, you use the interior air to kind of help condition that. As you exhaust the air out of the space, it kind of helps treat the air you bring in so that the unit doesn't see that drastic temperature differential. So those three pieces of equipment to incorporate that, energy recovery, and get them into an efficiency category that we're not, you know, because we wanted to at least match the existing efficiency and go up where we could. And there were some, the other units, we, across the board, we matched the existing efficiency, and in a lot of areas, we raised the efficiencies. So overall utility costs should come down slightly. And then, some of them, we cut, went from like basically an ultra-high efficient unit to a high-efficiency unit because we determined that the cost to go up that next level, we couldn't justify it. We were only looking at a few hundred dollars a year in utility savings, but an additional $60,000 in equipment costs. So, and then some of the other additional costs were the structural components to hold the weight of these three new units. So, and then some of the other units, we chose that, because they all sit on like a curb where the ductwork comes through the roof, and then the unit sits on top of it. Well, the new units are, some of them are just completely different shape than what they're replacing. So instead of having a cumbersome adapter, we chose that we have already got to open the roof for these three units. It's, makes more sense to change the roof curb on the other ones instead of trying to make what works, because the curbs were ended up being three feet tall, so then the unit would end up sitting significantly high off the roof, which makes it hard to work on and maintain. And then, getting the ductwork to match up with the new unit, it just didn't, didn't make sense to use an adapter versus just changing the roof curb.
So this sounds like, sorry, the project, there was a lot of research and a lot of thinking, a lot of number crunching?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
To sum it up, we went back to the drawing board a couple of times on this one.
We did.
Toby, I got two questions.
Sure.
So were you saying that you need to structurally do some changes to the roof to accommodate the weight?
Yeah.
On there?
Yeah. Add some additional bracing, because I think basically roughly, the new units are about 1,000 pounds more weight than what they're replacing on the, on the three that have the higher level of air exchange. I mean roughly, there's, there's ones like 600 pounds more, and ones 800, and ones like 1,100, so just kind of.
And then my other question is, I just didn't hear you quite write. Did I hear you say something at the beginning of, that you had Phase One was budgeted in the fiscal year, but then I thought I heard you say it was, the cost was about 100,000 more?
Than what we had budgeted.
Then what you had budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Budgeted in this fiscal year, we have $360,000.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
Total project, and the estimate's about 472 and some change.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just didn't hear that. Thank you.
Anything else you think that we need to know before we open the public hearing?
I think we covered most of it.
Yep.
Okay, okay. So at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step forward and make comment on this? Give it one more call, one more try? No? Okay, in that case, I'm closing the public hearing. Okay? Other questions or comments from the board?
No, I think you answered my particular questions at this particular time. Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, clear, there's a total, you said, of 12 units that we're going to have to deal with over the next few years, correct?
No, the Phase One is a total of 12 units. And then Phase Two is 32 total units. Phase Three is, I think, 68 total units. So this one, Phase One is, we broke it down, Phase One is basically the jail itself. And then, that was what we considered was the highest critical units that we needed to start with. And then, the next round is the sheriff's office, and then what we call jail support. And then, these units, these first 12, eight of those are actually roof-mounted, and then there's four interior units. And then, there's a total of 13 units, but one of them's the one that we're just, we're moving from one location to the other. And that one was basically, it was replaced in 2018 when we lost that unit in the middle of winter. You remember that, Laura?
I do. And that was a unit that.
And that was a unit that, as it was replaced, it was sized based off of what it was replacing. And it's also a unit that had, it's one of the three that are, have the higher level. So when it was determined that, well, this unit, even the new one, won't meet the requirement, but it, instead of trying to add energy recovery to that unit, it made more sense to use it in a different area, which is actually going to go for the, there's a gymnasium there for exercise, that unit will actually go, will replace that unit, because it was, that area doesn't have the high level of air exchange, so.
So as we look forward in our capital improvements planning here, so this is the cost for this part of the project, Phase One. Phase Two, you said, will be 36? 32?
32 total units.
32 total units. So are we looking at almost triple the cost then, roughly? Because I know you haven't done all the work.
Somewhat. The, these units, part of the jail set, jail set's got a lot higher ventilation rates. That's what's really pushing a lot of the cost of those ventilation rates. That's not as stringent for some of the other spaces. Other spaces are more office-oriented. So it shouldn't be as steep, but it's going to be, it'll be definitely.
At least double?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we go up to 68 units then in the capital plans then for, I think, fiscal year '23?
Yeah, yeah, and like when we get into like, the 68 units, that's the courthouse side, which everything in there is in that category of just general office space. So they, they're not specialized units, so they don't have the high cost per unit.
I feel those are interior units.
Yeah, and yeah, and they're all, all but two of them, of them 68 units, 66 of them are just standard interior units, like what's at this building.
Okay, thank you. Always like to kind of plan ahead.
Yep.
Okay, all right. I'm done with my questions, so.
I'm done with mine.
All right, we ready for a motion?
Yes, I want to make sure I get the motion correct here. So I move to approve the, what is it, the HVAC equipment replacement project as presented?
So we're looking to put it to bid?
To put it to bid.
Okay, okay.
Bid against it. So we get it on it. Yep, so I move that we move to bid the HVAC equipment replacement project.
I second. Discussion.
Hens.
Aye.
Olsen. Aye. Okay, thank you. Let's, let's see how close your pencil is to what it actually comes in. Lower's always better.
That's what we're hoping for.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, I think we'll invite the sheriff and Connie Torristall up. Thanks for being here, Jeff.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll let you start.
Well, we, at the jail, in the sheriff's office, have had a unique situation that we've been playing with for a number of years. When we moved out to the Justice Center when it was first created or construction, we moved into it, in 2002, we had three full-time cooks. And we found with vacations and extended medical leaves and things like this, we were running into problems not allowing them to have vacations. So we came to the board and asked for a part-time position. Well, we hoped that would resolve the issue, but what we found, it actually is kind of made it more, a little bit more complicated. One, when we advertised for a part-time cook position, that does not pay benefits, and it is just a straight hourly salary, that we really had a limited number of people that would come in and apply. Then once we would get them hired, it would be a short time, and they would find a full-time position somewhere, and they would leave. So we find ourselves, again, in an area of constantly recruiting, hiring, training, and then going back through that cycle again. It really came to be a crisis, in my mind anyway, when, there's been a couple of times in the last few years when all three cooks were out. And not having a part-time cook, in the past, I've hired a couple of my own cooks to be detention officers in the jail. So they would be reassigned and have to come back in, and fortunately, we had them, and they could cook in the absence of another cook. Not their job they've been trained to do, but it would be a stopgap to get us by. Prisoners feel they need to eat three times a day, so we, we meet that goal. So anyway, to try to get out of this constant groundhog day kind of scenario that we go through, we'd like to take that part-time cook, make it a full-time position, and then we hope that having a fourth position would resolve our issues. I already know of one of the cooks that's going to be going out on an extended medical leave here coming up shortly, so that will take us down. The last cook we had about a month and a half ago, we hired, that person has already left because they've been offered a full-time job. So we're without a part-time cook now. So in what I prepared for you through Connie, was a comparison of what the cost would be to maintain a full-time cook now. And when I say now, I'm really talking about the first in the middle of March, because we still have the notification of the opening, we have to do the interviews, and the hiring, the testing, all of our employees go through the testing requirements, and by the time we get all that done, we anticipate it'd be about the first of March before we could actually bring someone on. So the figures that you have in the document before you also shows what the cost is right now for the part-time cook position, and what it would go to beginning the middle of March through the rest of this year. And then, on top of that, you have a chart which compares a part-time position to a full-time position for an entire year. So that will give you the idea of the cost. In my budget this year, what I have is, we had a open deputy sheriff position from July through, through October. And so we had the savings from a full-time deputy sheriff with their benefits and everything until we were able to fill that position. So I believe the funding should be in the budget. However, just approaching halfway through this fiscal year, there are just things happening that are unknown, you never know. But the way it stands right now, and if we don't have any major situations or occurrences, I believe that we have sufficient funding in our budget to fund this position from the middle of March to the rest of this fiscal year.
Any questions?
Anything I left out? Okay.
Sorry, I'm just writing.
That's okay.
I'm going to ask one while you're.
Yeah, while you're writing here. So I'm, a little bit unclear about the entire, the full-time, full-time cost, okay? So it's 35,381 for the salary. This is what came through on the patent, right? Then 22,300 for insurance?
That is if they take the most, the most expensive one. So they may not even take the insurance, but we always try to put it in so that you guys have, if someone were to be hired.
Worst-case scenario.
That's going to be the worst-case scenario.
Okay, got it.
But that is an unknown.
And then, okay, thank you. And then, for the others, the FICA is the $2,844, that was correct? Okay, because I know at some point, there was a version slip that might have, was there one that had a definite point?
I had fat fingers on the part-time I P R S.
That's where it was.
That was going to be 16. My original one was $16,000. Lisa pointed it out. Okay, my fingers decided to get a three in there when I should not have.
That's, I was going to say, they're going to have a very, very full retirement.
That is exactly what the sheriff said.
So the difference for the rest of this year, for the, if you go with the person for four months, so a third of the year, I come up with it would have been about $8,800, right? Okay.
Yeah, because we're going to, if you do not approve the full-time position, we have to get a part-time position. So we're going to be paying the part-time figures. And what, what happens is, we up their hours to help cover the person that's going to be on medical leave, and they're pretty much going to be working full-time hours. And that is why I have that range in the part-time. We did have a scenario, the way time goes, it was last year, where we actually got a call from Human Resources that we, they audit in May, they have to audit all of our part-time people to make sure they're not over the range to get full-time benefits. And we had to audit our part-time cook because she was working full-time hours, because we did have people out on medical leave. And then we had to cut her out, make sure we had to cut her hours back so she would not cross that threshold. So that has happened.
Which defeats the purpose when you're in a 24/7, 365 type of environment.
And when you're expected to work part-time hours, but you're working full-time hours, but you're not getting any benefits.
Right.
Yeah, and I believe from our conversation too, you were stating that for part-time folks, for some, they want to just work part-time. They don't want to work full-time.
Right.
Or they may have two jobs, so if you need them to come in to help the loon.
Right.
They have another job that may not allow them to come in and help you out then, so you're still kind of in that. I like your, I like your analogy, kind of your groundhog situation. You're in a continued spiral going on. So.
I have no further questions. Supervisor Hens.
I don't have any further questions either.
Okay.
So I suppose you'd like me to make a motion?
Please, that's kind of how it works when there's just two of us up here.
So I move to allow the sheriff's office to change the cook position from a part-time to a full-time position that would be effective yet this fiscal year.
I would second that. Okay, Hens?
Aye.
Olsen. Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks for coming. Now, we'll invite Carla Webb up, and Sandra King up, and Lisa, are you going to participate in this conversation? Lisa, are you?
I'm here. I'm, yeah, I can participate if I need to be.
Okay, thank you. Okay. To discuss the funding allocation to the asset process for 2021.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. So yeah, we're already talking about FY21. It seems like FY20 just got started, but. So you have before you, we did provide you what the requests are of the county for FY21. We provided a comparison of the current budgeted amount for FY20 and then 21, and what that difference is. A little bit about assets is that right near, right now for FY21, there will be 29 agencies participating in the process. Three agencies that were, are in it for FY20 did not request funding in 21, and the primary reason for that is CICS is their primary funder, and they were not seeking funding from any of the other funders. And as you know, CICS will not be participating in the funding allocation process for 21. There are 21 agencies requesting funds from Story County. Overall, there are over 100 services funded through the asset process, and currently, there are 63 services funded by Story County. For FY20, there's 4.8 million being dedicated to asset to fund services with all of the funders combined. Next, if you want, we can talk about the requests and highlight a couple of those, or if you have any particular questions at this time we'd like to ask.
I'll start. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I just, I took clarification, these are only Story County-only funds, they're not the region funds.
Correct, just Story County.
Yeah, because I, when I initially looked at these, you know, I didn't see some of the other programs on here, and then realized, okay, they would be under the CICS region.
Correct, yep.
And also, this is just what we're being asked for, not what United Way's kicking in, or the City of Ames, or government student body.
Correct, yep.
So I have, one observation I have, because I've been paying attention to it, we've been paying attention to it, and even our employees participated in a food drive about a month ago, is that between the, two of the largest food pantries in the county, there's an increase from. from a request, a $5,000 increase. So, it's about a 200% increase. And I just want to note that that's reflective of what's literally happening out there that the hunger collaboration is finding, the increased need of that. Of course, the volunteers will go through these and make the decision about really what the amount of money would be based on what we decide. So, that's one of the comments. So, overall, I came up with, it was about 11.6% increase?
Yeah.
Okay, 11%. Okay. So, how this has been traditionally handled by pass boards has been to give a percentage of increase about what we've given the current fiscal year, or, you know, or the past fiscal year, depending on how you want to look at it. Sometimes, the request for money for administrative, if it's a large increase, has been split out with a separate dollar amount for that, so there's a percentage settled upon, and then the motion would have different for the admin assets. So, this year, the request is up $1,100 for asset administrative services. All the entities kick in to pay for a part-time asset administrator, okay? And so, that clearly is above the 5% or 10% or whatever we go with, okay? So, and the discussion then is between the two of us, I guess. I am going to ask you, did Supervisor Murphy leave any comments with you? She obviously couldn't leave them with us, but did she leave any comments with you about a preferred percentage range?
No, I did not talk with her about that.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, okay. So, the decision is what to go ahead and authorize, if any, for a percentage increase, decrease? I doubt that's going to happen, but those are, that's an option, okay? And Carla, do you happen to have a chart that shows, or Lisa, of what we've done in the past three or four years?
It's, I think it's part of the packet.
Okay, I might have missed that.
It's on the last page.
Oh, thank you. I didn't scroll down far enough when I looked at the packet, I was focusing on those. Let me shift my view around here. Okay. So, thank you. All right. Okay. Is there a particular place you'd like to start?
I don't know, I guess I would, just looking at kind of the average, I recognize the needs that are out there. I guess I would have kind of a question for Lisa to come in there, because I would think of a little bit more kind of that long-term sustainability on there. You know, you don't want to jump too high, although, you know, recognize the needs. So, can you just give me a little input as to, like, if we looked at a, I guess I would throw out there maybe a 5% increase? How, is that something that's sustainable? Where, what, I'm trying to figure out kind of a range that may be sustainable, if that makes sense to you.
If it makes sense, I am not prepared.
Okay.
No, not right now.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure whatever we kind of look at, that we're not looking at, you know, it's kind of that blip in the revenues that we're getting, that we have something that we, yes, sustainable for that particular fiscal year.
My preference here is that we know that our asset agencies, all of our human services-related agencies are facing some funding challenges from the federal and state level, some donors on the private foundations may be switching priorities or have less, et cetera. So, we are a fiscally sound county, and we've been blessed with good money management, good information, and also that we anticipate growth again this year. So, I'd like to see us at least at 5%. And then, I, and then I'm going back to the administration request, I think the $1,100 is a, is a reasonable request, given as that asset follows along more thoroughly with the entire United Way scorecard, and I think there's more administrative costs involved for the administrator. So, that would be separate from the 5% to maybe start at, okay? So, that's where I'd at least like to see as a minimum.
Sure, sure. So, just for clarification, the numbers that are presented here does not include that administrative cost, is that correct?
It does.
It does, yeah. So, we, that's why we're splitting it up.
So, let me get to my sheet here.
I was looking for it.
Yeah, because I didn't see it. Oh, I see it right here. Yep, okay.
And part of that increase for the asset administrative cost is, we're wanting to host a training regarding equity, diversity, and inclusion for agencies, and so, looking to put $500 into the administrative services for that, and then also bumping up the general fund typically, that's been budgeted at 600 for purchases of printing materials, website, maintenance, meals, and that, so bumping that up to 800, plus then the 500 for the training. Also, it pays for the Clear Impact Scorecard and access to that, and then funding the administrative assistant salary as well, combined. Makes up all of that cost there.
I, at the 5%, while I'd love to even raise it a little more, I've always, traditionally on the board, since I've come on, have been the one who's trying to push it up closer to 8, but we do have some costs that we don't know yet related in other areas that don't, you know, that aren't asked that, but we're not quite sure where the budget is going to end up with us. And so, as always, it doesn't mean that an agency with a special request, like Heard did for us earlier this year, of a limited service or whatever, something might come to us separately, but as far as the asset funding, asset requests, I feel comfortable with 5%. I know they, I know they could use the whole 11% of it.
Yeah, I would have a concern going up to the full 11%. Again, I recognize the needs, I've worked with many of these agencies over a number of years, so certainly understand they could use every single penny they get or that they need, but also look at kind of our fiduciary responsibility, what we're able to provide and sustain at this particular time. You know, just looking at the past, I mean, certainly back in 2015 was just the lower increase of about 1.7%. You've gone as high as almost 11% back in 16, 17, but then I noticed that right away, then it's dropped down to the 6%. So, that's where I'm saying, that gives me some concern. I would be fine with 5%, even potentially going up to maybe 5.5% kind of rate in that particular range, but I would just, I would have some, without some more concrete numbers, that would be where my comfortability would lie.
Yeah.
And when you're, when you're discussing the 5%, is that, are you discussing that in regards to general basic, or does that include local option? And then, public health has been separate from that as well?
So, for me, the 5 or 5.5% for both general, for the general, and then, then the local option is fine. On public health, and please refresh.
Five or 5.5.
Five and a half, five or 5.5. Please refresh me about the public health funds, are not a lot of those passed through, are they?
These aren't.
These aren't, these don't include the pass-through?
There are, yes, there are pass-through funds.
Okay.
In the amount of about $204,000 in this fiscal year, and I think the contract, I haven't seen the contract for next fiscal year, but it's about 200, it's 204, it's there.
Okay, thank you.
And those are pass-through, these are not.
These are just straight up.
So, what happens, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, we had a conversation about this briefly too, is that those funds are used first, and then these are accessed. Is that correct? No?
No, I mean, that, that could be how it's worked, Lisa.
Because, because the pass-through dollars from IDPH are for homemaker helping, okay? So, that specific service is accessed after those dollars are used or passed through.
So, just a clarification then, on the percentage form, that last page, so where it has the percentage amounts, is that, since you're talking, since we're talking the general, either 5 or 5.5%, and then the local, that isn't, so like, if we say 5%, that doesn't mean 10%, that is just meaning 5%? Okay, 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 for each one. Yeah, since that was brought up, I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly.
Correct. The local option sales tax, so I would have assumed that the whole overall ask between general and, and local option sales tax would be 5%. It's specified out because we need to specify it out in our accounting.
Got you.
Paid for out of the 40% local option sales tax revenue.
Got you, got you, got you.
I'm also comfortable, especially since there are some drawdown, pass-through funds to begin with, that are drawn down for the one program at least, okay, it sounds like they're, to go with either percentage on making sure that the public health dollars are at the same 5 to 5.5%. I think that's what your question was, right? Okay. And Lisa, do you feel that those funds, that's?
I'm hoping.
Yeah.
So, here's, here's how we'll probably go forward with this, is whatever recommendation you make today, those are the numbers I will put in the budget for conversation when we talked about countywide, so that we can actually see how that affects and what the effects are of where we're at. That's, at this point in time, and at that point in time, you'll have to say, well, that's, we're going to have to find some places, and is that one of the places we could? I don't know. Typically, that's not how it's, we've had to do it. If this is a priority and we want to be able to fund the 5.5%, for instance, then, then we find other places.
Right.
To lower our expenses. And your, your point, or your question earlier about sustainability, as you can see, I think that every year becomes, I think the ask is going to be what the ask is going to be every year.
Right, right.
And as far as long-term sustainability, budgeting individually every year, we don't know how much they're going to draw down, we don't. It's hard to say, well, yeah, we can afford this, we're going to guarantee 5%. We're not, we're not guaranteed.
Sure.
At this point, best we can do is say, for next fiscal year, we're going to.
Got you, got you. Okay, okay. I guess with that, I'm, I feel a little bit more comfortable actually being more at the 5% range for me. So, I want to make sure I'm doing the motion correctly. So, I would make a motion for 5% funding allocation increase for the fiscal year 21 to asset, separating out the administrative cost of allowing that to be at the 1,100. And you need to have that be the equivalent, the same percentage amount for the local option as well?
I would make it three separate, yeah, the general, the supplemental, or the general, the rural, and the, how do I look at that? As three separate.
Three separate motions?
No, no. Where you're at right now, and then add, and 5% for the local option, and 5% for the other. Is that sufficient?
And 5% for public health. Okay, and 5% for public health, and 5% of the local option.
Yes.
I second that.
That makes sense to you, Lucy?
Can I just read this back? So, FY21, administrative cost increase of $1,100, 5% increase of local option sales tax, and a 5% increase of public health.
And 5%.
And general basic.
General basic.
5% general basic.
Yep.
Thank you.
Further comments or discussion? Hens?
Aye.
Olson? Aye. Thank you very much for the immense amount of work that everybody puts in to get these numbers and work with all of the agencies.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to welcome up Barb Steinbach and talk about information technology. Tell us what they've been doing.
Good morning.
Good morning, board. Last but not least, Ray.
Good morning, Barb. Thanks, Lisa.
So, I'm here today to update you on what's been going on in the IT department. And I try to keep it brief and user-friendly. A lot of times when you're updating people about IT, you can see their eyes roll back in their head, and you're like, oh. We need to keep it simple. So, what we've been working on, and I've mentioned this in previous meetings, is the deadline of January 2020, and that's a typo on my report, because it's not 2019, it's 2020. Microsoft will end support of the Windows 7 system. So, we had to make sure that we got all of those out of, off the Story County network, and we started out, I believe, about 176 that we had replaced. We're down to one, and that's just because it's a part-time person at the Justice Center, not part-time, he's in the office part-time, and we need a key for him to open the door and let us update his computer. But I think that's, we're in good shape then to meet the January deadline. Another thing we're working on, we did have two servers in the budget for this year. Generally, a server can be $10,000 to $12,000, depending on what you get and the maintenance and the period that you want that for, the support. So, our unique server person, I can't say enough good things about Joel, he's building the two servers at about a 50% reduction in the cost. So, unfortunately, the pieces to build that servers, or those two servers, are coming in piecemeal, because they're coming from overseas, some from China, Taiwan, so we're running into some tariff issues and other things. A lot of times, we'll go through CDW, but sometimes, another vendor may have those available. So, we've been struggling with that, but we'll just keep plugging away. As far as the VoIP upgrade for our phone system, it's in place and functioning, so this now means that we have a full installation in both Nevada and Ames. If one goes down, the other should pick up the slack. Granted, the network doesn't get cut from here to Des Moines, we should be good. As far as network expansion, and here's just a recent update that I got yesterday for the radio project for animal control. So, initially, we put a tower on the building, found out, darn, there were some pine trees at cemetery that were in the way, so the vendor came back with a tower proposal, putting that same radio antenna on top of a tower, and then we had to work with P and D to make sure that our permits were all in place, and we did the soil test. So, the soil test came back, they were approved, the tower has been ordered, just found out yesterday, it's going to be delivered in January. So, I asked the vendor, I said, well, January, are we still going to be able to pour that cement pad? And he asked if it would be okay to wait till spring. So, that's where we're at. They will deliver it to the animal control location. I need to talk with, Jovi just left, I need to talk with Jovi, I'm not sure I like that idea. Where do we put it? What about snow, if we get a lot of it? Is it going to be in the way when we have to pile snow? And what if the box gets damaged? Who's liable? So, I'm not sure that I want them to deliver it in January, so I'll talk that over to Jovi and see what his thoughts are on that. And unfortunately, then, that means that our next plan for the VoIP system was to extend it to animal control, so the entire county could be on the VoIP system. So, that will be delayed then until after the tower's up and functioning. But I guess that's part of it, you have to be flexible. We did recently, last week, upgrade the connection at HSC. Is Carla still here? No, she's not. So, she was having issues with online training, and this is the internet connection that we've upgraded. Orion was able to quote us a price the same as their current connection, so there's no cost difference there. However, now they have a 1 gig connection for their internet, and that's the entire building. And what we usually do then, I know the booth gentleman was in here saying that he wasn't getting enough wireless connectivity. getting enough wireless connectivity, so he will have ten percent more now. Because we usually, ten percent is allocated to the wireless network, so. So that's some good news. As far as the software systems, we are working with planning and development on their new Citizen Serve implementation. They have weekly meetings, and we've offered up our IT meeting room for them, so they're not all crowded around Jerry's desk. And we sit in on some of those, initially, the last one, basically what they're doing is a lot of data cleanup. Once the data is the way they want it, they wanna put it in the new system, and the vendor has made it clear there are no changes available after that. So it's really imperative that everything gets done. And the forms have been looked at and updated to the way they think are most efficient for what they're designed to do, so that's kind of exciting. We're also working with animal control, they'd like to implement some type of a software tracking, so they can keep better records on their animals and things, and the supplies used, and shots, immunizations, whatever they have to do there. We're also looking, and I didn't mention this, but I kinda want for IT inventory to have some kind of a barcoding system that will push directly into the AS four hundred system. We've narrowed it down to three that we like, the trick is just getting that information to flow over, that could be the stopping point for us. But we do have a barcode reader, why not use it? And most items do come in with barcodes, so it's not something that would be terribly expensive to get in place. Under miscellaneous, we've just been doing a lot of work with budgets, which is over until January, where we might have to do some more work, depending on what the Board comes up with. Also, I wanted to mention, I would like to do more user training to help harden our network systems. Over the weekend, New Orleans was hit, the entire city was down.
Fair enough, yeah.
They were in a state of alert, West Des Moines got hit last week, and that has been the theme, that they're targeting hospitals and governments, because they feel maybe we're not putting as much money into our infrastructure or our staff training, so I wanna really focus on that. I don't wanna be, have our name in the paper for that. And really, we can do everything, networks, we can have everything updated and patched and the latest release, but where our weaknesses are is with users. So I think training would be the key there. Wanted to go over the time, the project timeline a little bit. And I included September because there was some overlap or some leftover from that. The radio project, for a while there, we were meeting once a week with Raycom and getting some of the firewall rules explained, and they're still in the planning process, and we haven't been involved now for about the last month. I understand there's a few issues involving towers, not really knowing where the towers are. So they've kinda held back on, you know, hurry up and go, so we're just hurry up and waiting. But we're ready when they are. The Java removal, and I mentioned before that Java was a program that we use extensively for our Tyler products, Eagle Recorder, Open Fox. We have all the new updates done with Java, and I think I mentioned Java's gonna start charging us for using it, it's not free anymore. And we would just be happy if they got rid of it altogether, because a lot of viruses come in on a Java platform. The only thing we have to finish is Auditor's Office, and they had voting going on, so we sure didn't wanna disrupt anything then. So we'll probably be paying them later this month and trying to get that finished up. So there is one program that we will have to pay for Java licensing, and that is the Open Fox program that Dispatch uses. And I did reach out to the vendor, saying, when are you gonna move away from this Java platform? Because it's gonna cost us twenty-five dollars per user per month. And if three users are on a computer, that's seventy-five dollars per month. So it's expensive, and I did budget for that, but the vendor replied back and said, oh, well, you know, we weren't aware of that, so we're gonna be looking into it. So I'm hoping it goes further than that, we'll see.
I'm surprised a vendor would say that they were not aware of that. I would, I would've just thought they would've been a little bit more educated and...
I agree. And I'm surprised other agencies didn't do a little pushback, or maybe they're not paying attention to the licensing. Unfortunately, if Java does an audit and finds out you're using it, you're gonna get a bill. One thing I have found, and I hate to say this, but a lot of the smaller programs that you use for government aren't really updated, they don't, it's not the Microsoft where all the money is forced into that. These are smaller, little onesie-twosie programs that don't, they're not quite up to speed with what's going on in the industry. October projects are done, November projects are done, December, we're going to do, I think I mentioned earlier that we're taking one building at a time and getting rid of the old nineteen-inch monitors, upgrading people to at least twenty-two to twenty-four. So we are gonna do a walkthrough at the HSC building on Thursday to complete that building, so that'll be exciting. And we found that when you replace a computer, you don't necessarily need to replace the monitor. We can get maybe eight, ten years out of a monitor, whereas with the computers, I like to revolve those every five years. So there are a few smaller ones there, but we're going to work on getting rid of those. And we're going to be helping assisting facilities with the DHS temporary relocation. The computers and everything will be moved, but we, they are on our phone system, so we'll have to move their phones and put up a temporary switch for them to use. And once the carpet replacement is done, then we'll help move them back. But that's been pushed back to the last week in December. It's been moved a couple times, that's my latest update, was last week in December, so. And then the Citizen Serve implementation, I'm not sure that's still gonna happen this month, they're finding a lot of, it's a lot more involved than they thought it would be, so that will probably be moved to January, but I think that we're allowing them to be in a good place with that. The meetings are going very well, and the vendor is very knowledgeable. In January, we are going to be looking at, hopefully, January, February, implementing a paging system at the Justice Center. I've pulled together a committee, we've got quotes coming in yet this week from four different vendors, and then once we have those, I'll send them to the committee and we'll meet probably sometime first week in January and go over them, see what we wanna do, if we wanna have the vendors come in a demo, or what we'd like. So far, we've had four interesting, different takes on what they would do for a paging system, so. It's, who would've thought, there would be four different ways to do it, but that's exciting. And then also in January, I'd like to bring the website committee back together for a reunion meeting. Here we are, how's it going? One thing we struggle with is pictures on the page. We like to have seasonal pictures, and we're just really struggling to try to get something there, so, I don't know, maybe the website committee will have some different ideas, maybe we'll have some contests, maybe we can involve the employee action group.
Is the feedback that you're getting so far saying that they don't have time to take photos, or that they don't have access to photos that maybe others have taken, or...
We just aren't getting any.
Okay, oh, I understand.
There's no reasons being given. And Melanie at Community Services is really, she sent a couple pictures over, but one of the problems we run into is the format that they, we receive them in. And I, I think maybe I will send an email out, just asking, does anybody have any pictures they would like to put in there?
Well, can you talk to Leanne Harder first, okay?
Sure.
Because actually, several months ago, I guess at the beginning of this year, it was put on Leanne's work program, or maybe late last year, I don't remember exactly when, that was one of my requests last year at Budget Time, was that we get an archive created. Because as I tried to pull photos off in my first two years here, I found personal photos, I found, it's just, it's a mess when you get into it, because everybody's just doing what they can, and they move on to their job, I mean, it's not, so, but then, from Leanne's standpoint, we've loaded her down with so many other projects, that it is a low priority, and we've assigned it a lower priority. And so, maybe find out where she's gotten through...
We've had this discussion.
You've had the discussion, okay, so, but I agree with that. In fact, we've got a Conservation Board member who is a photographer, who has offered to come in and work with staff about an archiving system. So it's just figuring out with everybody loaded up with time and overloaded, what do we do? You know, where, where do we find that? Oh, good, okay, Leanne's headed here maybe for more updated information.
Yeah, we did get together and came up with, what, three different options?
And Erica Place with Conservation will be meeting with me this coming, I think it's Thursday morning.
Okay.
Just to talk about how she can provide some assistance from the document standpoint while I'm gone for the publisher and Creative Suites. But then, one other thing on our agenda is to talk about the photo repository and the next steps, and then Civic Send as well. So, yeah, we, we met, oh, it was a while ago, probably four or five months ago.
Two or three.
Time travels fast.
Not as long as I thought. I met with IT staff, and there are some options we currently have, we have money in the budget to purchase. So I, I suggested to Alyssa that that money remain until in the budget and will get it figured out, yeah, this fiscal year.
I would ask that whatever avenue you take as you move down forward with this, is from, pictures of people are important. Of course, be careful with children. Because of privacy issues and whatever, but any adult in a public place that's of something that like we would've sponsored or whatever, okay, or class, per the law related to privacy, et cetera, they have no expectation of privacy of their photos not being used. And children is more because you don't wanna set up a situation with danger for the child. But just so, so if that could be conveyed out to whatever you decide to do and communicating with everybody, is photo, people are good, right, to put in photos, people look at those photos. Okay, thank you.
A lot of times, we do get photos from, Conservation has photo contests, and they have some really excellent ones, so they share that folder with us.
Yeah.
Hopefully, in January, we've got a lot of different things. We would like to nail down the tracking software for animal control, and I did have the animal control network installation in January, we're gonna move that to spring, so probably March, April. And then one thing that's probably gonna affect you guys as well as everybody else, new software all the time, so we're going to upgrade the Microsoft Office software to Office nineteen.
Okay.
And it, I haven't reviewed it yet, but if there are a lot of changes, we'll have some training.
Thank you.
And maybe one of the lunch and learn things, I think that would be a good opportunity for that.
To Office nineteen, you said?
Yes, twenty nineteen.
Thank you for thinking about, those of us who may not be as, who are more challenged by Office, yeah, the Mac users in here, yes, thank you.
There is a lot, it's like with anything, there's a lot of capability, but you find that you only use certain things. And so, when you go to these trainings, you probably get a hundred percent of the information, but you only need to use twenty, so maybe questionnaire, what do you do on a daily basis, and maybe we'll, I know calendar is a challenge for a lot of people, so that might be something that we can have a little mini course on.
Thank you.
And then I just had a couple other charts I wanted to let you look at and review. So the website hits, that seems to be pretty consistent, we had the top twenty-five, and we started with the lowest at the top, maybe we should've done the highest, but of course, county attorneys is the highest, and then Story County itself, that's a little misleading because that's just going to the word on the page, Story County, but then jail information is the third, and then property records, of course, and then Story County again, so. Sometimes statistics are a little hard to present and hard to interpret, this is what we have through Civic Plus. And then I just wanted to end up by showing you what our service ticket categories look like. Most of our support right now, and this varies by the projects that are going on, so right now, a lot of our support is software. And then second would be the phone system and hardware. Phone system, maybe next quarter won't be so big because we're not going through the upgrade. We had a lot of cleanup that we had to do after that, so these tend to fluctuate with whatever projects we have going on and what the season is. So that's what I have for you, Board, do you have any questions for me?
I don't, I appreciate the graphics though that you've done on the website, it's always nice to, nice to see. This is interesting to see the volume of website hits to the county attorney's office versus some of the other areas.
Yes, I agree.
Really great report again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very user-friendly and good information.
Good, I'm glad. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay. So, next would be upcoming agenda items.
Are there other reports?
Oh, there aren't any other reports.
I didn't think so.
Nope.
I don't have anything that I'll be putting in the agenda.
Not until, you know, as we roll over to the next year, we'll have lots on our plates, okay? Public forum number two, don't see any members in the public left, so we'll pass on that. Liaison assignments, committee minutes, and comments and announcements.
Yep, so, for me, for this afternoon, I am gonna stop in at a reception for Chris Nelson over at the City Hall tomorrow, attending the mission statement meeting that we have in the afternoon. I do have a conference call, then afterwards are, I might have to leave that mission statement early, depending on how late it goes, for that stepping up steering committee.
Yeah.
On Thursday, I have a meeting with United Way on childcare, and then I also have a CICS meeting in the afternoon, and then that evening, we have a boost meeting. It's not a regular boost board meeting, but it's the process committee meeting that's kind of looking over more the job description criteria and hiring for a new executive director.
When is Marion Cressy's last day?
I think he's, he's gonna go till the end of the fiscal year. Because they're hoping to have someone in place, I believe in May, or hired by April, the end of April, for them to start in June, and there would be an overlap for a month for some training.
Great.
So it's what, it's what they're anticipating at this particular time. And then, I'll just go ahead and look at Monday, the twenty-third, I just have on my calendar for right now, is the limited board meeting that we have on the twenty-third.
Right, so, okay, thank you, I'm glad to hear that you're going to Chris's reception, I'm headed to Story City, so, and then out of the office for the rest of the afternoon today, and then mission statement, if I can make it, I've got a possible conflict there. I'm headed to Boone this week, so that, to discuss HERDA issues and the possibility of city levies. It'll be the executive committee for HERDA that's meeting as we try to look for money again there. Also, there's an open house for the East Industrial Area that the City of Ames is having on Wednesday night, I'm gonna try and drop in there, because that is an important situation for us going forward. Also, there's discussion now, they really are starting to push to get the infrastructure in the ground on the East Industrial Prairie, Prairie View area. There are businesses who are making serious inquiry. So I don't know if I'll get to the Christmas in Collins, but, yeah, so unfortunately, those are the, some of the fun meetings then. And also the Hunger Collaboration this week, we'll probably discuss, I understand still the need is really out there, and donations are still falling short of that. So then, it looks like, oh, and then there's a joint Ames Economic Development Commission and Chamber Board Meeting, I sent you that in case you were able to go, okay? Yes. So the only other announcement I really have here is a reminder that, yes, next Monday is the meeting at ten o'clock, we're closed Tuesday, so if anybody watches this tape and says, I just birdied on Christmas Eve to go to the Board of Supervisors meeting, we won't be here. And that's gonna be a very limited agenda unless something really big comes up that we can't wait on. Now, the county's closed on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, and Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, and there will be no Board of Supervisors meeting on December thirty-first, because we have our organizational meeting on Thursday, January second on that. So, and then the probably biggest one is just try and start to announce over and over again that effective January first, the building hours change for most of the county. So our building hours are eight AM to four-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, we basically cut back from five o'clock. Now, obviously, the jail and maybe some, there's other... Now, obviously, the jail and maybe some, there's other places that are maybe open different hours, but for the administration building, the Human Services building campus, they're closed, okay? So I'm, with that, I'm going to wish everyone a happy holiday. We'll do that again on Monday morning, and I entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
And I'm going to second.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.